All right. It is six o'clock and we will call the City Council meeting to order on June 27, 2023. Thank you all for being with us. And we will have an invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jeff Harris.
You would please bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to ask your spiritual guidance. Lead us to best represent the city of Kerrville. Please watch over and bless our first responders, dear Lord. Watch over them, guide them, protect them as they protect us. Dear Lord, we come to you this evening to thank you for all the bounds of Kerrville, everything that you give to us and the glory that we have here in the Hill Country. We ask this in your holy and heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, united, God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Stuart, do you have some announcements for us?
Thank you. We have a few announcements tonight. If I can get them up on the screen. There we go. Almost, there we go. First of all, the library is continuing its summer program activities. They'll be going through all of July. A number of activities for both children and adults alike. And those are our schedules, which we'll publish probably tomorrow on Facebook. And I'm not going to go through all of them. We did a little bit of that last time. But on the children's side, we still have family storytime, Lego club, and family movies on the 11th and 18th and the 25th. So a lot of opportunities for things to do for kids. And on the adult side, crafts, book reviews, and a movie, Breaking Away, on July 19th, if anybody remembers that. And we had a very young Dennis Quaid in there. So if you want to see that movie, come on by the library. All right, our pool promotional days. Dive-in movie is this Saturday, July 1st, at the Olympic Pool. We have the animated feature Mona, which is coincidentally the same sound that I made Saturday night when I found out my air conditioning had gone out.
[laughter]
Oh, that's Moana? Well, never mind. That's a different sound then. The gate's open there at 8:30. The movie begins at 9:00 PM. And there will be, this is a free event, and there will be snacks available for purchase. So great way to cool off and see a fun movie, Moana. Finally, we have a party coming up next Tuesday. The annual Fourth on the River Celebration, celebrating the Fourth of July. Louise Hayes Park, another free event, begins at 2:00, followed that evening by the largest fireworks display in the Hill Country at 9:30 PM. And that fireworks display is once again sponsored by Mini-Mark. So we have, I hope I say all these ones right. Don and Hawks at 3:00 PM, Ally Colleen at 4:30 PM, Los Tex Maniacs at 6:00 PM, and then headliner Randy Rogers Band at 8:00 PM. So that's always a fun time, big crowds. Come on out and see us. And then I don't have a slide for this, but July 22nd is the annual UGRA River Cleanup. So we encourage or invite you to remember that. The city will have a group out there. You can sign up to join us if you want. You have to sign up by July 14th. We're trying to, we're going to do it from 8:00 to 10:00 this year to try and keep it cool with hot weather. But it's a great way to get out there and clean up the river. So come join us. If you can't join us, I'm sure there's plenty of other groups that are also putting something together to work on it. That's it for me. Do y'all have any announcements? Council?
Council, anybody have something? I just want to applaud all of these, all three of these groups. We have so much going on in our community. It is just absolutely wonderful. And our Parks and Rec, our library, and Arcadia with the Fourth of July, that committee, they just do a bang-up job for us. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of them. All right. At this time, we have some proclamations and commendations to give. All right, I see Greg Richards.
I don't believe Danny Almond made it.
And is Danny Almond here? I didn't think so. Greg, come on up. We want to say thank you for serving on EIC for all the time that you did. So I will read this. And Danny Almond came on at the same time, and you're both going off at the same time. So, "City of Kerrville, resolution of commendation, whereas Gregory Richards has served as a member of the Economic Improvement Corporation, the date of service beginning May 28, 2019, and whereas Gregory Richards has served faithfully and dutifully on said board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that Greg Richards be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Economic Improvement Corporation, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. And this was passed and approved and signed this day, the 27th day of June."
Thank you. My pleasure.
Well, you thank you. Would you like to say a few words? Maybe some of the things that you were a part of this?
First of all, I don't know anything about the missing money.
He's an attorney too, so.
It's been a pleasure to serve. I feel like we've had some great projects to look at, and I really appreciate Michael and Kim's and EA's leadership in walking us through the opportunities that we had. My parting comment going off of EIC is that for whoever in this room has the ability to move the needle on getting affordable workforce housing in this community, please, please do it. We need it desperately. It's never going to be a perfect project. We got the employers, or at least we've got one big one, we've got more coming, and we need a place for those people to lay their heads, so.
That's a miss.
Yeah.
Great. You need a picture? All right, gotta get a picture.
Thank you.
I don't need to leave yet. All right, we will get Danny Almond's to him. And I believe we are going to honor Parks and Rec again. You guys have been up here several times, so please come on up. Thank you all for being here. And I think this is just indicative of what we just talked about, things you're doing with the pool, everything that goes on with our parks. So it is just fitting that all of you are here. So thank you. City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Kerrville, and whereas Parks and Recreation is vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and specifically, the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department's goal to encourage our community to get outdoors, be active, and play. And whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, hike and bike trails, swimming, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, the city of Kerrville, Texas, County of Kerr, recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of July, 2023, as Parks and Recreation Month, right here in Kerrville, and urge all citizens to join me as we recognize the importance and the value of our parks and recreation, and further encourage citizens of Kerrville to visit area parks and become more familiar with our parks and recreation programs available to all. And I have signed this. So thank you, thank you for all you do. Again, I'd like to have you introduce yourselves and tell us what part you play.
Judy Eichner, I'm the Assistant Director.
Tina North, I'm the Office Manager.
Rosalina, I'm the Recreation Manager.
Ashley Boyle, Director of Parks and Recreation.
David Bartle, Parks and Rec Advisory Board Member.
Anything you would like to, any of you would like to add?
Parks and Rec, when you're talking about quality of life, Parks and Rec has a lot to do with that in this community. I served on a Parks and Rec Board in another town that's similar in size to Kerrville, and this Parks and Rec Board has at least twice as many activities as the other towns. They're busy this summer, and I appreciate their efforts.
Everything is, it's marvelous, awesome. And I just can't say thank you enough to all of you for all that you do. So, Ashley, anything you want to say?
Thank you. We do have a wonderful park system, but I also want to brag on our team. We have an incredible team of dedicated individuals. We have about a staff of 50, and they work tirelessly and passionately to provide services to our community. And I just want to give them recognition, of course, this is all of us here tonight. If you see us out in the field, please feel free to stop by and say hi. We'd love to talk to you.
Anybody else like anything to add?
We just appreciate the support of the city.
We just appreciate what you guys do for us. So, all right, and this board is, we always have more advocates than this board than any other board in town.
It's one of the fun parts.
That's right. So, all right, who would like to hold this and we'll get a picture? All right, keep up the good work. Turn around, shake your councilperson's hand.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
All right, we are ready for our Visitors and Citizens Forum. And Shelley, we have some signed up, I believe?
Yes, ma'am, we have five.
Five, okay. And I am going to ask all of them to please do, or limit their talk to two minutes tonight. We've got a number of things on our agenda, and we've been here since 3:00. So we'll keep things short and sweet. And who's first?
Kristin Madre.
Are we limiting them to two minutes?
To two minutes, yes.
Do you have to take a vote of that? I mean, it's not their fault we've been here since 3:00. They just got here.
That's.
We should allow them their full time.
I think that they, last time, they did it very, very well in two minutes, and I think they can do it again in two minutes, so.
Should we take a vote then?
I don't think so.
I have the ability and the authority to do that.
Really? How so?
I do, because I, of my position, sir. So.
How?
Kristin Madre.
I mean, the mayoral position doesn't give you unilateral authority for, over everything.
I have authority over this, Roman. Thank you.
But you don't know how.
Go ahead. Kristin? Is not here. Okay.
Lily Beard, 120 Via Vista Drive, Kerrville. All of you are well acquainted with me, except for maybe Mr. Harris. I just don't want you guys to forget about the library board. Even though it's not on the agenda tonight, nor is the library on the agenda tonight, I still want to keep us forefront, because we are not giving up on this. And after seeing the list of all the children's activities, it really upsets me that this has not been settled prior to this, months ago, and these books moved, because now we've got all these children running around the library all day, whether their parents are not, and these books are still out there where they can get ahold of them. And they should be in the adult section where the children can't reach them. And I was at the library advisor board meeting that they had, and the provisions that they are going to be presenting to you guys, I hear, very soon, is totally ridiculous. They have doubled and tripled the amount of qualifications and things that you have to jump through to get a board, a book reviewed. And also, if you ask for a book to be reviewed, then you, the citizen, has to come up with another book to take that book's place while it's being reviewed. That's not our job. That's the library's job, not us. That's the library's job. So I please ask you again to keep the children in mind this summer when they're running around the library with all of these books still out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay, Kerrville. I know we're getting close on the budget, and when I heard that several capital assets are now on the hospice list, it's taking us back to 1915, when the Public Safety Building was on that list, and yet quality of life issues or projects went ahead of it. I have no problem with the quality of life projects, but now here we are. We have the potential for an emergency again because maintenance is required on these buildings, one of which is the Calhoun. But I have a suggestion for a solution, and that being that maybe a Friends of the Calhoun, Friends of whatever building could be established. And those funds work like the library. Friends of the library are working to take care of their needs at the library. And also, I'm wondering to help with the budget, if we couldn't have an across-the-board reduction of some percentage, 1, 2, 5, 10, whatever, in each department, and that money be applied to a capital asset replacement fund so that we don't have these emergencies. And this brings me to something that was mentioned in the budget about the water, and that the excess funds from that bond for water and storm, there were excess funds that were going to be transferred to the CIP. It didn't sound as if that was a dedicated designated fund, and I think those funds should stay on the street maintenance and repair rather than just go on a list, because they could be lost. And I have more, but I'm out of time.
Thank you. Sorry you couldn't finish.
George Eichner?
George Eichner, 604 Cardinal Drive. Wanted to give you a report on the third successful fundraising effort of the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation. If you recall, the first one was three years ago, when we bought 44 ornaments for Sidney Baker. And last year was Light the Island, and this year we've ordered 96 ornaments to light Junction Highway from the lake house all the way to the loop. And we had, these ornaments are ordered locally through Christmas Decor and Tammy Sheffield. And the other good news is that these ornaments are made in the United States, so we don't have to worry about shipping and China and all that good stuff. Couple of deals, we raised the money in 68 days. We had a lot of naysayers that said, man, nobody's thinking about Christmas this time of year. And fortunately, we had 105 generous donors that stepped up. Curiously, it's two-thirds, and this has been our record over the year, two-thirds of the people are individuals, and one-third are businesses. And you would kind of think, and maybe go, particularly when you're doing lights on the street, you would think maybe the businesses might be more involved. The last thing is that we're able to order a storage container, thanks to K-Pub. We have one storage container out there where we have the 44 ornaments stored, and we've ordered a second one, and Mike Whitler and the group will allow us to put it out there, and we'll store these in there. And this is just a Godsend. If it wasn't, if we didn't have a place to store this stuff, it just wouldn't be possible. And of course, K-Pub's going to put them up for us. But looking forward to another season to brighten Kerrville at Christmas, and we hope we get more people. Maybe the City Council would put some money in their budget this year for some Christmas ornaments. So anyhow, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bruce Draky?
Bruce Draky, 821 Earl Garrett Street. I want us to remember how wonderful Kerrville is. I received a number of calls last week pointing out that I hadn't been here for a little while to remind us what a beautiful place that we live, and that people show up here to complain about things, but rarely show up to compliment us and to point out what a wonderful place we have created over the years, not only this council, but the councils before them. We build upon the shoulders before them, and we have a staff that is absolutely wonderful. And the one thing that is constant in Kerrville is change, and we see that right now as we look at Ms. Kim. Right? We know that things change. We know that times change. We know also that the reason Kerrville is what it is is because it is eclectic, unlike Fredericksburg, that has that strong German traditional aspect that many of us didn't choose when we moved here from somewhere else. Kerrville is eclectic. It's a mixture of people, where parents get to decide what their children learn, like at our library, where it requires a parent for a child to have a library card. Where in our schools, our parents are involved at the board and in their lives as their children are brought up and educated, just like they are with our different religions. And if we want to think about it, Kerrville is a very Christian town, but there are hundreds of Christian religions in the world. We don't all look at it the same. We're in a free country, thank God. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Bruce.
That's it? All right. Thank you all speakers. I appreciate it, and thank you for adhering to our two minutes. We will move on to the consent agenda. Council, is there any that you would like to have pulled?
I do need to note that amendment to item 4B, page 1, item 3, the visitors forum, I've been asked to insert citing rule 5.3 in the procedural rules. It should read as, "At 6:10 PM, Councilmember Garcia called point of order citing rule 5.3 in the procedural rules stating the speaker time can be extended but not reduced."
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are none that need to be pulled, do we have a motion to approve all three?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. And I just want to add to 4A, just want to thank the Senior Services Committee, I think there's some of you here tonight, and just thank you guys for getting that grant. And there's two of you, thank you, thank you. And I believe it's going to have put five trees and five benches along the river, and that is super. So thank you for doing that, and please say thank you to the rest of your committee. We appreciate it. All right, we are ready for 5A. Will you read this in for Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-17. An ordinance emitting Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning on an approximate 15.92 acre property known as 199 Spur 100 from a residential mixed zoning district RM to a public and institutional zoning district PI, providing other matters relating to the subject. We do not have any citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Drew?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an ordinance to change from RM to public and institutional. County purchased this land as part of their bond package for the animal shelter and other county facilities. They would be permitted to do those uses in the RM district. However, when staff met with the county staff and their consultants, they agreed to file this own change for the sake of public transparency. So the zoning map will actually show the similar type of use that's on the property. As you can see, much of the property around it is owned public and institutional for the county property and the Veterans VA Hospital and the two cemeteries that are on Spur 100. So just to make sure that when people do look at the zoning map, it's more transparent as to what the use in place is. The planning and zoning recommended approval. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right. Council, anyone have any questions on this? Just off of Spur 100, actually Spur 100 and in from Highway 27 there, just a little bit. Joe, anything? Roman?
I want to be clear on the recommendation that was passed through P&amp;Z. In our packet, it says they recommended approval with unanimous vote. It then goes on to say that P&amp;Z also recommended that the county, through their development plans, be sensitive to the Freedom's Path Apartments and the adjacent cemeteries with regards to visual screening and screening potential noises from the facilities. That's not actually something that we can put as a condition or a regulation on it, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's totally up to them?
Right.
And that's not even going to be part of our motion or any action we take tonight?
That's correct, nor the regulations of their development.
Right.
From the city's standpoint.
Right, thank you.
Brenda, anything?
No.
Okay. Jeff?
No, ma'am.
All right, at 6:26, we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? All right, at 6:26, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2023-17 on first reading.
Second?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Very good, thank you. Thank you, Drew. All right, ordinance number 2023-18. Shelley?
An ordinance annexing attractive land to the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, such property consisting of approximately 111.806 acres and generally located adjacent to and northeast of Lower Turtle Creek Road, such property being used to further the expansion of the Comanche Trace Residential Subdivision. The property more specifically described in the ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits. Adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
This is the annexation of about 111.8 acres south of Comanche Trace. This property does have access to Lower Turtle Creek and access to Comanche Trace Drive. As, of course, within the ETJ, and it is, excuse me, they are requesting R2 zoning consistent with their most recent phases of development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the case for approval with unanimous vote. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, anybody? Joe, you're good? Roman, you're good? Jeff?
I'm good.
You're good? And Brenda? All right. At this time, then, we are a public hearing, yes. We will open the public hearing at 6:28, and we have a speaker?
Yes, Jerry Wolf.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Wolf. It's not so much this particular item about Comanche Trace growing. The issue is growth period of adding additional housing, and why am I raising up this issue? I question the water supply level of Kerrville. I just don't see where we have the water to have this continued emphasis on growth. I think Mrs. Eichner, if I heard correctly, in the EIC meeting, you had mentioned that Lamar would be coming to the city soon for some additional funding, which I presume to mean additional housing units somewhere. But everywhere we hear, there's growth in Kerrville, but what is happening in the county was just the opposite is taking place. As you're aware, probably, that the county commissioners several months ago As you're aware probably, that the county commissioners several months ago passed a rule that a rural subdivision had to have a minimum of 10 acres, if you platted it, obviously. And also, Headwaters Groundwater Conservation District came out with the rule that if you can have a well on your property, that you must have a minimum of 10 acres to be able to do that. So those two actions have said to Kerr County, we've got to limit growth. That is not taking place here. Also, what brings into this question about supply is the Ellenberger Well, now referred to, I guess officially, as the Loop 534 Well. Here I have the document, excuse me, that was filed with Headwaters. It's the amended conjunctive use permit. It's a document that the city has to file to list all the wells that are going to be produced, reproducing from the aquifer. And so this happened in November of 2020. And this added the Loop 534 Well to the list of city wells. And one thing to note, two things to note on there. One, the amount of gallons that have been allocated to the city has not changed. It's the same as it was before. And I think there's been an illusion, or it was to me, that when this Ellenberger Well was completed, that the water supply of Kerrville would increase. It has not. Also, on this farm, you have to list the aquifer. And the aquifer for all wells, including the Ellenberger Well, is listed as the Lower Trinity. What happened to the Ellenberger classification? I think that one thing that should be done because of this, we know we're short on water, the whole state of Texas is. It would seem like to me, if a developer comes to y'all or comes to the city and says, "We want to build here," that the city has to, in part of the documentation that's provided to you as council, there's a document from the city staff explaining how you have, that there's an adequate water supply and sewer service that can be provided to these people. And I think that should be part of a document that publicly can be seen. And I think right now, you know, one thing about that Ellenberger, where I forgot to mention, back in, you had a workshop on March 21st talking about drought situations in Kerrville or the drought status in Kerrville. And it was mentioned in that presentation by the Director of Public Works that the Ellenberger Well and the Mountain View Drive Well cannot be produced at the same time because of a colonar depression. So essentially, instead of having two wells producing, you're right back to where you were. You have one well producing.
That's your time, Jerry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, ma'am, it's a very serious matter.
We are very much aware of that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? It is a public hearing, yes. We have not closed it.
Bruce Stricki, 821 Earl Garrett. You know, long before I came here to Kerrville, I started developing properties. And in every town, unless you come to the city and create a development agreement, which Comanche Trace has, you're in a line. It's a first come, first served line. And until something is annexed and platted and you have the entitlements, something in the future, perhaps with one R, as was suggested just a moment ago, is in the future. And we don't know if it's going to happen or not. How many times have we, over the years, stood here, and I've been here, telling you about projects we're trying to bring? They didn't happen. They're not platted. They didn't get done. Some of them did. This is a project that has a proven record in the city. They have a plat before us. They're ready to go. We don't know what Lennar wants to bring. And you know what? Lennar's asking for some city dollars. This is before us today. They're first in line. They actually have a development agreement with the city. And that's how we should treat this. This is a real project today. And when I come here as a developer, I expect to be treated the same way. Not about some future maybe, not getting kicked out by somebody who's asking for the city to give them money. And in the 15 years I've been here, I have never asked the city for money for one of my projects.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else wishing to speak? Peggy?
Peggy McKay, Kerrville. In addition to water, I ask or request or hope that we can do something about traffic study. For the first time in a long time, I took a drive down Highway 16 South, and I'm amazed at the amount of building in the county. All those cars are coming into Kerrville. And now I understand why the traffic at G Street and 16, 16173 is getting so heavy. It's not just what's in the city, but we need to be aware of traffic coming in from the county. And I'm not seeing any traffic studies, anything about traffic flow. If we add new roadways, that's going to be a lengthy process. So I hope into the mix, we add traffic flow.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. At 6:36, we will close the public hearing. Staff, not staff, thank you. Council, anything else that you would like to add?
I would like to see if we can get some of those questions answered. I don't think it's been brought up from the dais and actually answered. But what do we do to guarantee that we will have adequate water supply for any development that's being proposed? And especially with this one, we're now like at the final stage, towards the final stages of getting this through.
As Mr. Stricki mentioned, this is part of a development agreement. So the capacity for this project has already been accounted for.
Right. Okay. In cases where we don't have those agreements, then, because I know this one does, in cases where we don't have those agreements, because we have a lot of developments that are being proposed that don't, what do we do in those cases?
Public Works works with Planning and Development Services as part of that. So if they have any concerns for the area, they bring that up to the developer, that they need to make those improvements to make capacity necessary.
So where would you say we're at in terms of our water supply? How adequate are we? Because it's important that we continue to plan for the future. We know that there's going to be constant proposals coming to council. They may come to fruition, they may not. But our eyes should always be towards the future and making sure that whatever comes to our community, especially as we talk about the number one need in our community is affordable and tangible housing. If we're going to bring that to our community, then we also need to bring and make sure we have the adequate water supply to afford for that. So where are we? And I'll ask that question first, then. How safe are we? Where is our supply at?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
For Drew. So when we have our budget meetings coming up, we're going to have a water fund discussion. So we'll get into the, all the details of it now. But for the moment, what I can speak to is when each and every one of those developments comes through the door, they have to do an impact analysis, both on the water and the wastewater side. Now, that doesn't necessarily look towards the capacity. That looks towards our capacity to pump it, the size of the pipes, capacity that we have within our system. But Kerrville has been so forward-thinking in the number of different ways that we could diversify our water system. I was talking to my best friend's father about the, God, the gray water lines that were implemented back in the day.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt because I have a limited time. I only have five minutes to ask questions. I have another one.
Okay.
And I appreciate the information. If you want to share any more after my five minutes is up, but I have another question after this. But I'm just trying to get, where are we? Where are we right now?
So as a, we'll have to get back to you on the exact specifics of that answer. But going through the 2018, 2019 housing study, a part of that was, how are we going to be able to provide water for all that? So we have capacity to handle the growth that we have planned for the future. It certainly is hard when we're asking folks to conserve, and I understand that conflation. But one does not take the balance of the other. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
We can have a fully fleshed out discussion about it later.
I think I should probably reach out to staff then and set up another time to me because I've discussed this once before, and I've asked a question in council, and I haven't gotten any of those numbers yet. So maybe if I can sit down and we can see more where we're at in terms of planning.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Secondly, where are we in terms of planning for our thoroughfares? I know we have a plan in the 2050 plan to look at that, and we're talking about these additional developments. I think it's a perfect opportunity to figure out, there are some of those proposed areas in this area here. Are we proposing to use some of those that were in the plan, or are we going a little bit different route?
The thoroughfare plan, of course, is with Kerrville 2050 Plan, extends out into the ETJ as far as planned thoroughfares or existing thoroughfares. This one is continuing, or previous phase of development is the continuation of Comanche Trace Drive. So that's currently under construction. That is a collector that runs from Lower Turtle Creek to 173.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's the two existing arterials, Lower Turtle Creek and 173.
All right. Thank you. And Roman, I would highly, highly encourage you to sit down with staff.
I've done it, ma'am. Trust me. I've done it, but I haven't gotten a lot of the numbers yet. I'm requesting, that's why when people bring it up in the public, I'm trying to also make sure that their questions get answered because I don't feel like we see that too often. But I will definitely sit down once again.
Please.
And try to see what we can do.
Their door is always, always open, and they'll help work with you until you get your answers. So, all right.
If council would like, we can have a workshop on water?
If we need another one, absolutely, we could do that. Yes. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion for 2023-18?
I will make the motion to approve ordinance number 2023-18.
On first reading. Add that to it.
Yes, ma'am. On the first reading.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. And Drew, don't go away. We've got one more. Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-19. An ordinance emitting Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of an approximate 0.75 acre property known as 512 Yorktown from a medium-density residential zoning district R2 to a light commercial zoning district C2 and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an application that was made by the city of Kerrville in conjunction with the property owner. They were working with our staff to look at the zoning of the property as they were purchasing it and found that it was zoned R2. And as you can see by the map, it's not very consistent with the adjacent properties. So somewhere in the rezoning across the city, my assumption, because I can't say for sure how our consultant came up with this, there was a small structure on the property. From the aerial photograph, it looks like the scale of a home. Since one of the goals of the rezoning was to not create any new non-conformities, is why I think it was identified as a residential property, although there has not been an occupied house on it for some time. So it is currently zoned R2 based on the consistency of the strategic catalyst area number seven and the adjacent properties. Staff agrees that it should have been zoned C2. But of course, going through the public hearing process, notification process as required by state statute. So staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval.
Okay. Just to kind of clean things up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Council, any questions for Drew on this?
Is he the applicant?
Yes.
In this case, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. At 6:44, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers signed up? Shelley?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right. At 6:44, we will close the public hearing. And council, unless you have something else, do we have a motion?
I do have a question. Are we authorized to be an applicant under this? We are.
City can file a zone case, yes.
Okay. It was only under, and I'm just, forgive me, because it was only for the PDD where the city could not be the applicant. Because I know in certain, there is a definition of what an applicant is in our zoning code?
Right. The process outlined in the code defines the city, that the city can bring forward a zone change, yes.
Okay. On behalf of a property owner, or is that when?
Regardless. Whether it's on behalf of the property or not, the city has the authority to bring forward a zone case.
In fact, P&amp;Z can recommend zoning changes to you all. I don't, what's the concern?
Is there a problem?
Oh, I'm trying to figure out, because I remember under one circumstance, the city was not allowed to be an applicant for a specific zoning request. And I'm trying to find out, I don't know if we are an applicant. An applicant means the property owner or his or her duly authorized representative or agent to include a developer or realtor. City isn't encompassed within that definition.
And I don't have the section in front of me, but the process of going through a zone change, the city has the authority to bring forward a zone case, as does the Planning and Zoning Commission, as does city council.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right. Are we ready for a motion?
We adopt ordinance number 2023-19 on first reading.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yes, ma'am. All second.
And all in favor, please raise your right hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Drew, I think you can sit down. Thank you. And with 6A, we're going to have a little bit of a financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'll get my report up here. There we go. Okay. So I'll give you a report as of the end of May 2023. Can I see it? Because I'm not seeing it up there. Can you see it on your screen?
Yeah.
Martin, I can see it on mine.
There we go.
There we go. Okay. There it is. Okay. So we'll look at general fund first. We talked a lot about economy and those kind of things in budget workshops, so I didn't bring those things back to the table tonight. So just a quick look at general fund here. Property tax currently 97% collected. Remember, we budgeted 98, so tracking along on that really well. We're about $350,000 away from hitting our budget number, so don't have any big concerns there. Sales tax tracking right now $75,000 ahead of what we estimate this time of the year. And we'll talk a little bit about that more on some future slides. Service revenue continues to be better than budget, primarily due to EMS. And we've talked through those things through budget workshops and that, and the reasons that EMS is running a little bit better. And we were kind of conservative this past year in projecting those revenues just based on what we had seen, but still applied some increases because we were better than budget so far in 2022. Recreation still running behind year-to-date, but slightly had a budget estimate now, so it looks like they're making up a little ground, the rain probably, and then just some activity we're seeing in some places. It's good, picking up. Personnel expenses, better than budget. Remember, that includes salaries, benefits, and training. So vacancies play a part in that, better than budget. And then there's some timing that takes place there, too. So that budget estimate's not always a science. It's just a historical average. So more to come on that. And then the other, I was just going to point out that our contingency is in that other expense category. So that does change as we get closer to year-end, if in the event that we have to use some contingency for something. So far, that's still sitting good. This is just a graphical view of what we just talked about. Revenues, really close to aligning with the way we budgeted them as our expenses, but this just gives you a little bit different view, so you can see it. Sales tax, we'll talk about this a little bit more. So May had a 3% increase over May of '22. 12-month rolling average up just a little bit. So last month, it was in the six range. This month, 7.1% rolling average. We watched that just to kind of see what those trend lines are doing month over month, We watched that just to kind of see what those trend lines are doing month over month, but also looking at a bigger scale when we look at a 12-month average. So the trend lines remain consistent. We talked about that a lot too in budget workshop and how we watch that and monitor what we think sales tax is going to do. Again, that's a volatile revenue source, so we'll continue to talk about that. We do have June sales tax that has been received. It's the first month that we actually saw a decline, so we were 6% down from June of '22. However, in our analysis, we did have two larger property, larger sales taxpayers that didn't, I guess, meet the deadline to remit for it to hit in June, so we fully expect that to hit in July. So we should see an uptick in July just for those, those two that didn't hit, so those are bigger. So more to come on that as we see July's hit and kind of dig into that to see what's going on. This is just a little more description on the service revenue. I think I brought this to you last month just because this is a revenue that's kind of been trending ahead of where we expected it to be, even based on the increases that we applied in the '23 budget. But we were conservative even compared to what our billing company kind of projected for us. So we backed off of that a little bit just to be sure. So we're seeing those come back better. There's a little bit of history there. As we talked about '22 and '20, '20 and '21 with COVID, EMS revenues were down. So we had budgeted flat for those. So last year was the first year that we had actually shown an increase in EMS. So continuing to perform better than budget, so that's good. And just a reminder, the solid waistline here, our curbside pickup is a pass-through with Republic Service. So we don't actually have a revenue source from that, that's a third-party contract. So just want to remind folks of that. That's not really a city revenue other than the administrative fee that we keep just for the billing is the only thing we use there. Water fund, very happy with the way it's tracking, given the drought and all the things that we've been dealing with. I think everyone is doing a really good job as they did last year with conserving water. Water and sewer revenues and reuse are really tracking right along with the model, so that's making me happy. It just says that our moving model is working the way it's supposed to, so we're hoping that continues as we go into '24 with our budget that we're able to project based on what's actually happening month over month and use that and apply to some historical data to get that. Expenses, slightly better than budget, about $188,000. But again, we have contingency in there, still in that other category. That's why that one looks better than budget. Here's just your graphical view. Right now, water and sewer contributing about equal as far as percentage goes. Still really aligned with the way we budget. So again, that's really what we watch as we're going into a new budget season really to make sure that we're budgeting the way expenses actually happen. So that's super important that we're watching that every month to see that that's happening. Personnel, budgeted at a little over 27%. Right now, we're sitting at 26%. But again, there's, there's a lot of factors that go into that and we do see a little bit of leveling. So that budget estimate, you know, it's an estimate that we use with historicals. So transfers are happening as budgeted. And then, you know, of course, we had the, the budget amendment mid-year where we moved some money over to asset replacement from excess funds from last year. Development services, about $100,000 better than the same period last year. This is a really difficult fund to project just because it depends directly on development. But I'll say that Development Services staff does a really good job trying to anticipate upcoming development and we've been working really closely with them on the '24 budget, so hoping we can align that. Right now, it's looking like they're going to be a little bit better than '23 and '24, but you know, again, we're still monitoring that month to month and Guillermo and his team are working with developers to make sure we're tracking on new stuff. You've seen some things open in the last few days, so we're happy about that. Some things that are going to be opening up here from what I understand in the next few weeks. So should see some new business opportunities and some new options for citizens. Occupancy tax fund continues to track less than last year. This kind of, to me, is a telltale with sales tax a little bit for what's going on. I don't think we do have to keep in mind the drought and river conditions probably had a lot with travel here, but as I said, we're seeing some activities specifically on the park side picking up, so we're hoping that this might have an impact on that as well. KSP and several hotels right now are completely booked for April of '24. So that's good news looking forward. Keep in mind, and we talked about this last month, revenues that we received for next fiscal year for both parks revenue, for overnight bookings and also for the occupancy tax piece, those were moved forward to fiscal year '24, so those are actually going to hit where they're supposed to hit. So we won't see a big jump here and then a big fall off next year. So we're tracking those very carefully and Parks has been helping us with that, so. But I think kind of the same story with sales tax. You can see May of '22 and May of '21 substantially ahead of prior year, but they had, you know, some impact from, from COVID implications as well. So, you know, as we talk about, you know, sales tax not really being a doom and gloom story, we had some really big years and so it's hard to follow those years with those same kind of increases. So just continue to watch this and see what happens in the next few months. Little upcoming calendar, we just had our general fund budget workshop. There's a lot more work to be done on the general fund as we get more information from Kirkad and others. We do have another budget workshop on July 18th, which will be Water, CIP, and then some other small funds that we'll bring to you. We'll get our certified property tax roll on or before July 25th, that is our hope. Remember that if they have to be 95% certified before they can provide that to us, if they don't provide that 95% certified, then they'll have to provide us with an estimate, which in my experience has only happened one time in the last 10 years or so within the city. So we're hoping that we'll have that sooner than the 25th, so we have a little time to work through that final general fund budget. We'll be presenting the overall budget to you on August the 8th and then have a public hearing for that, first public hearing on the 22nd of August. And I didn't mention in here, but in August, we'll also be starting our audit work, so. Super excited to go for more than two. Any questions on that?
Vacation before, right?
You what? I don't know where we'll fit that in, but we're going to try. So any questions you have on financial report?
Counsel, anybody have anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your work, thank you for your contribution.
All right, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
And appreciate the good work you guys do. Okay, we will go to 7A, Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-21, an ordinance admitting the city's FY 2023 budget to allocate funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, to purchase public safety vehicles and equipment. We do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, okay, so we've talked about this a little bit, but I wanted to bring you a little bit bigger picture here. Try this. Nope. Okay, I'm advancing. I seem to be the only one that has this problem.
I had to walk, I had to walk back.
You did? Must be user error.
The page's gone.
There you go. Yeah, I'm using that, but it's... Okay, move anywhere. Okay, so just a couple of things that are important to know. So in the grant fund, typically, we receive money that really, sometimes, they don't expect anything in return. So it's a gift, I guess, of sorts. But the way that federal and state grants usually work is there's usually very specific rules for what we can use it for and then also specific timelines. And so that's one of the reasons we're bringing this to you today. So GASB, or Government Accounting Standards, Standards of War, Statement 33, requires that until there's an expense incurred, this money sits in unearned revenue. So basically, that's where it is right now. So this budget amendment basically is moving money from the unearned revenue to the revenue and then allocating it as we would with the budget process to the expense line. So just so that you understand a little bit about Attachment A and what that is, that's just showing how we're going to actually move the money should this be approved. There is a lot of annual reporting typically required and anytime we spend more than $750,000 in state and federal funds, we're required to do a single audit. And so we've had to do that the last few years. It's not really a big deal, it's another step that our auditors do for us, just to deep dive into are we meeting requirements that were outlined within each particular grant and how we allocated those funds. So as you know, the city received money through the state and local fiscal recovery funds, through the American Rescue Plan Act over the past couple of years. I listed the Treasury's final rule and where I'm specifically referring to is 259 and 260 in pages. It's a huge document. If you want to go read that, I encourage you to do that. But there is an overview and I put the links to that in the attachment. So it's a much shorter version that gives you kind of a summarized version of what the requirements are and what the reporting requirements are. But it does give us, one of the allowable uses is for government services and one of those specifically refers to provision of police, fire and other public safety services. So public safety vehicles and equipment purchases are allowable within the ARPA funds section and a lot of other cities are using these funds for the same thing. We've done quite a bit of research to see how these are being allocated. Any purchases that we make using ARPA dollars period have to be encumbered by December of 2024. And that's really important because allocating this money to something that couldn't be completed within the time period that's required would require us to pay back that money if we can't finalize the purchases paid for by December 26. So it seems like a long time from now, but given our supply chain issues, it's really a pretty short period of time, so important to mention that.
So Julie, does this amount here encompass the entire pot?
Yes.
Of the ARPA funds?
Yes.
So there's nothing left over after this?
There's a, we've got a buffer of, I think, about $25,000 or $26,000, which...
Enough for five laptops?
We'll have to ask Harvey. We'd have to ask Harvey what that is. And we may have already covered that, I'm not sure. I'll get with her on that. I'll get with her on that. I'll ask her because I know she's been working on some other things. Yes. So we did receive $5.9 million in state and local fiscal recovery funds in two tranches and you can see them outlined there how we received them. Project allocation so far, so the public safety communication system, almost $3 million for that and you know what that project encompassed, we've had several presentations on that. And then a piece of the police body worn in-car camera system that was combined with another grant that paid for the largest portion of that. So we filled the gap there to make sure that project could get through. So remaining ARPA funds there at the bottom, 2.489 is what we have left. Okay, so our recommendation, as we talked about before, really continues to address the conversation we've been having about aging infrastructure and assets. And so this gives us an opportunity to take care of some of those things that really, even with the best plan, the general fund would have a big difficulty supporting this kind of replacement, even with a perfect plan. So we're continuing to work to put together a long-term plan as we've been working on for the last few years, but we've made some really good progress in the last year and I really feel like we have really a good place moving forward as far as how to address those. But this kind of gives us an opportunity to get a head start on that. Also gives a little bit of relief to that asset replacement fund so we can allocate those dollars to some other assets that we need to address. So what we're recommending is replacing police vehicles and this is going to be approximately 15. And the reason you don't see specifics here is because with public safety, there's specific things that have to be met. And so manufacturers will have ordering windows and they're only once a year typically. So that ordering window for '23 has already passed, so we're having to kind of piecemeal public safety vehicles together with which dealerships, manufacturers and other places have available for us and we're just trying to make that money go as far as we can. So once we know that this is, you know, what council wants us to do, then Chief McCall is, and his team are working on how can we make that money go as far as we can for the city. So 1.3 million allocated there for police vehicles and then the list for fire EMS is very specific and that's because we have more information on that. So three ambulances, one of which was ordered in 2021 that we actually just picked up, which was good news, we finally have it. Then we have another one that's on order from 2022 and then one that we would be requesting in 2024. And remember, there's legal requirements on replacement of those. One fire admin vehicle that's, that's old and been hanging around for a while, so that's kind of just a daily use when guys go to training in San Antonio and things like that and other uses. Two stretchers for EMS and two cardiac monitors for ambulances. Specifically how that money has been identified. So again, this just gives us the opportunity to address some of these needs in a way that we wouldn't have necessarily been able to before. So happy to answer any questions you have about ARPA or otherwise.
Julie, just one quick question. You said if we don't spend the money by December of '24...
We have to encumber it by December of '24, so we have to have it committed.
As long as we're billed and invoiced.
We don't even have to necessarily be billed and invoiced, but we have to have it encumbered on the book, so we have to have an order in place with a quote or something that says we have identified how this money is going to be spent and it is committed so that it's restricted. Now that has to be spent in total by December 26.
Thank you.
So there's essentially maybe $32,000 that is not actually designated for something.
Right.
We didn't mention something, but you will try to, or do you need a little bit of a cushion in there for...
Well, right, we might. We might and, and again, you know, once we get a better handle on what police vehicles we can find that line up with what we need and what that's going to look like. And we've been seeing a big increase in upfitting costs too. So everything in general has just gone up where vehicles are concerned. I think we looked and two years ago, we were buying a fully outfitted police vehicle for less than $60,000 and that's bumping $95,000 now. So huge increase on not just the vehicle side, but the upfitting for what it takes to get the equipment on there, so. So we're just going to, we're going to try to push that as far as we can, but that does give us a little bit of cushion in the event that, you know, something comes back different. We won't buy a whole nother vehicle, but it could fill the gap if, if we go over what we estimate.
All right, well, it's a great thing to be able to take advantage of and...
And again, more to come on the asset replacement. I know we keep talking about it and I keep bringing something different back, but we do have, I think we've made really good progress on that.
Good, very good.
I was going to say, because it looks like without these ARPA funds, we are definitely lacking the funding to do it otherwise.
Right, and we've been talking about this, you know, for the last several years and council, two years ago, when we, we looked at the history, has really started making more of an effort to make that part of our budget process instead of it being excess funds rolled over and just making this be part. Because really, as we talked about in the workshop, our asset replacement fund is part of the general fund. It's just separated so we can see it. So whether it was in operations or in a separate fund, it's still general fund money at the end of the day. So it's just a matter of how we allocate and I think that it, you know, we just have to make that a priority and this just gives us an opportunity to address some things that would take longer to address.
All right, any other questions or comments, counsel? Okay. Okay, we are on a first reading for this. Did we have anyone to speak to this?
Yes, ma'am, we have one.
All right.
George Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. And the last little exchange kind of highlighted what I was going to talk about and just so everybody's understanding. I'm not here to say you shouldn't spend this money, just to point out the, what I think is sort of obvious, which is another red flag that our, our current budget, no offense to the people that are reporting the budget, but our current budget isn't sustaining itself. The, in the agenda bill, it's saying utilizing this lump sum to replace the public safety vehicles and equipment will also partially accelerate much-needed replacement of aging assets in an amount the city's annual budget cannot support. That's the problem, that our budget can't support the asset replacement that we are carrying on. Our budget continues to increase, our expense budget, but the gap of meeting that increase is, is widening. And this is another one, I mean, I, I know that people are working on the asset replacement, but it's going to take a miracle to pull that rabbit out of the hat unless we start addressing it in a really big way. We have this grant, which is a one-time revenue that's going to be used for maintenance. I mean, vehicle replacement, same thing. The Public Safety Complex Bond, which is arguably maintenance of a public safety building. Street Maintenance Bond, which is just maintaining streets, not building new ones. And then the sales tax reliance that we're increasing, increasingly adding to. And as will happen, sales tax is going to fluctuate, so we can't keep counting on them. So it's, as you're doing this budget cycle, please look at really hard questions to ask and you're going to either have to cut some services or increase revenue. The only way to increase revenue is, in a perfect way, is to raise taxes, which nobody wants to do. So you're going to have to make some hard decisions because we can't keep going. You know, with the last meeting, we looked at the possibility of adding $2 million of expense to a museum, right? And where are we going to get that money? Well, we talked about EIC, but bottom line is we have limited resources and we keep increasing the need for spending them. So this, I hope, is a kind of a wake-up call as you go through this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready for a motion, counsel?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-21 on first reading and authorize staff to move proceeds for purchase of vehicles and equipment outlined in Attachment A.
You have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand and it is unanimous, all right? Thank you very much and thank you, Julie. Appreciate all your work again. All right, we are ready for 70, Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-20, an ordinance admitting Chapter 70 of offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 3 electioneering at polling locations. Have the city's Code of Ordinances to revise the article as to regulations applicable to electioneering on city... applicable to electioneering on city-owned or city-controlled property containing a savings and severability clause providing for penalties not to exceed 2,000, ordering publication providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, thank you. All right. Not just sure who to call off for this, so. We have, we did receive, we have the, a buffer, two sheets of paper with the buffers on them. And I guess first of all, council, let's start with you guys. Do you have anything you want to say before we bring speakers up?
I have a couple of questions. One, can you tell us what we have these pages of the buffers for?
Yeah, I'll ask for distances. It was 240 feet, and we wanted to show you what we would see. Because 240 is kind of, it's an interesting number. So, we were discussing it, and we said, well, here's what 100 looks like, here's what 500 looks like. And I'm not sure why we have 1,000 in there, because that's all the way like seven blocks away. You're basically in your homes at that point. So we just wanted to provide some scale.
And we have not made a decision on the buffer, was one of the things that we were, had talked about the most. So, anybody else, something before we bring our speakers up?
I was curious what the, in the whereas clause, it talks about. Page two, the first whereas clause, you can actually read the entire thing there. The last few words talk about clutter. Think we probably don't need those, that language in there. The intention, it shouldn't, if we're going to discuss these regulations, they should be focused narrowly rather than just arbitrary clutter. So I would like to see that removed.
Actually, I thought clutter hit the bill.
Well, I know you probably did, because you mentioned last meeting, you didn't really want anybody at all to be seen there, which wouldn't probably be the best thing either. Page three talks about, sorry, number two. And this talks about where the auditorium, AKA the Calu Theater, is going to be used. Each person can have one tent set up for, or a temporary shade structure within the 200 and feet outside the door. I assume that's the 200 feet radius. But it says something interesting in here that was not authorized by council at our last discussion. And it says that they can set up that temper, temporary shade structure within an area designated by the city manager. And it goes further to say such shade struck, such activities may only occur in an area that is beyond 240 feet. I want to make sure that wherever we're discussing, wherever we're requiring them to be positioned is clear, and not going to change from one election to another. I think that, and I want to open this up for discussion on council, but I think that creates some type of issue. Not an issue that I have with the city manager, or interim city manager, just the issue of arbitrary decisions, just that one person gets to pick where it's going to be located. And I think it's, one, easier, and two, more understandable if this body decides where that area is going to be. We talked about a whole bunch of locations, and I guess this is one area that we can focus on to hone in and to further describe where that location's going to be. I also want to just, I also want to hopefully discuss, we talked about one tent or one shade structure. I was hoping that we could possibly include some language about, because I assume all of these, wherever they're going to be set up is in the parking lot, in the parking space. I don't think there's anywhere on that property that doesn't have a parking space that doesn't impede people from driving in and out of there. So to that extent, I would also hope that we would say that they cannot take up more than two parking spaces, because one normal-sized tent that anybody uses takes up approximately one and a half parking spaces. And to reduce the additional vehicles that somebody would put in, or stationary vehicles, whether it be trailers or any car or truck, just to hold stuff there rather than it being an actual location where someone's going to stand in electioneering with a sign, like we usually see under a tent. I would like to make sure, you know, we can eliminate that. Again, I think our priority is to increase parking for visitors and people who are going to go vote. And I think all of that is, doesn't need to be there.
Okay, shall we go ahead and listen to our speakers?
I say one thing to address one of council member Garcia's concerns, and I think I, well, I don't think, I know I communicated this to council. So you're limited, the city manager is definitely limited here by the 240 feet, and then generally located in the eastern end of the parking lot. What I was concerned about is specifying a, or using the ordinance to specify a specific area that may be, you know, part of a parking lot reconstruction, that they can't be put there, and then we have to come back to council sometime before the election and get a two reading and change this. That's what I was trying to avoid. It's up to council. Or even a staging area. I think we all anticipate there's going to be construction in and around the Calo Center sometime over the next few years. And that's what I was trying to avoid, or allow y'all to avoid, certainly with the language here.
Thank you, Mike, you've spent a lot of time on this, so. Okay, shall we go ahead and listen to our speakers? And then let's see what, what then we can discuss. So, who's our first one?
George Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. To just start with what he just talked about, I still think it's easier if you just allot a space that's for tents. I don't even think tents should be allowed there at all. I mean, I'd be okay if you told them you couldn't have them there. But what you end up with, as you've got it written, is the same thing you've got right now, which is during a campaign, people are going to go out there, and as petty as it is, it happens. Luckily, it was after I was involved with this stuff, but people fighting over that's where I want my tent to be, that's where it's blah, blah, blah. So if you just allot an area, call it pit row, tent row, whatever you want to call it, and if it's under construction, then we deal with it that year. It doesn't have to be a change, it's a reasonable change, you can write that in. The other is, the, the thing I brought up once before, the, the election code says, you know, and you guys are all aware of this, I'm sure, owner may not prohibit electioneering on premises outside 100-foot area. Reasonable regulations concerning time, place, and manner of electioneering is allowed. I would argue that counting the number of signs that I'm allowed to carry or even place on a vehicle is not reasonable. It's getting closer to freedom of speech aspects that I don't think we should, we need to even cross. The clutter that you guys are talking about, that's not tied to the number of people. Like if I had, I mean, I think if I read it right, unless it's changed, you've got a limit of 10 signs, four of which can be carried. Okay, that means I can only have four people at most electioneering, walking around with a sign, or I'm not sure if it described electioneering as with the stuff you hand out, but I don't know that it's necessary. You can deal with the size of signs, deal with definitely not putting stuff on the buildings or the trees, and you can count the number of signs that are placed, but I think you should shy away from what I'm allowed to carry, because if I can carry it, I should be able to carry it. That seems to be like above and beyond. Anything else, I guess, really is irrelevant to me. I mean, I just assume nobody go out there either, but.
Thank you.
Bruce Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 821 Earl Garrett Street. I like the 240 feet, I'd like 225 better. It's a Fabinacci number, and 240's not. It's an arbitrary number. I like 225 better. But I like this distance. Kerrville is the only city where you have to walk, in my experience. I voted for Orrin Hatch in my very first election, when I was 18 years old, in Cottonwood Heights, Cal, Utah. This is the only city where I've had to walk through a gauntlet if I wanted to vote. They don't do it in Fredericksburg. They didn't do it in Cottonwood Heights. They didn't do it in Vista and Fallbrook, California. They didn't do it in Portland, Oregon. Those are all places I've lived and voted. I'm 60 now, I've been doing it for more than 40 years. I'm actually older than 60, but I didn't want to say that. So, it's a shame, in this city that I love, that is absolutely my favorite place, the longest place I have ever lived, that we have to go to this. But we need it. Whether it's 225 feet or 240 feet, we need a greater distance. And putting folks, as the way the map looks, looking at the drawing, back on the far corner next to the, I think it's the Presbyterian Church. No, that's Episcopal's, I'm sorry. Thank you. Obviously not where I go to church. Episcopal Church, or preferably, preferably on Jefferson Street on the back. That's where this belongs. It's okay, it's all freedom of speech. I want everybody to vote however they wish. I put up my signs that I like. I have never turned down a candidate for getting a sign on one of my client sites. I want everyone to express their opinion. I wish everyone would vote. But this gauntlet that exists in Kerrville is not what democracy is about. Yelling at people, running through with a loud horn, expressing your political opinion that we did see in this last election, whether you agree with it or not, is inappropriate. It's not right. It's not right for me to do it, it's not right for other people to do it. We all have a chance to cast a secret ballot. I don't know how you voted Roman, and I'm not going to tell you how I voted. That's the beauty of the system, and we should not have to be abused with what people assume our vote is going to be, walking through the parking lot to cast that vote. That's the problem. This ordinance, this is not the problem. I don't know if it's the best solution. It's a shame we even have to be talking about it. I'm embarrassed that we're talking about this. And I hope that the folks that make this necessary realize that that is not democracy.
Anyone else?
No ma'am.
That's it? Okay. All right, council, some, some decisions to make.
I have a small comment, and I visited with Mr. Hayes about it. I think on the 8th, whereas, I'd like it, city, the words, city staff to be replaced with city council. Instead of city staff fines, I think since this is a council resolution, city council should fine. And if that's a problem, Mike, that I don't understand, please correct me, but.
It's probably more appropriate.
It puts the responsibility then on those who have made the decision, so.
If that's a, I'm not-
The only thing that I would like to, I would like to do one thing when it comes to the distance. When you look at our 1,000 and our 500 and our 240, the, the 240, I believe, is, it's in the green on the little one, and then it's, I believe, the yellow on the bigger one, right? No, it's in the blue. It's the blue on the one.
That's 100.
We just need one.
It's 100. This is the 240, the yellowish one.
I think you were right, ma'am.
I think I was right. So, but, but this is, this here is the, the 240.
Yes, this is 240.
Yeah, yeah. So if you take that about a, oh, I don't know, three-fourths of an inch, see there's a car sitting there along Main Street? And then that is that fellowship hall along there. That's, there's parking there in front of that fellowship hall. I would like, I feel, if we don't pull that back so that you cannot put a tent in, along the fellowship hall, people will have to drive through people campaigning in that spot. And I don't think that's right.
Sorry, explain that again, people will have to do what?
Well, if you come in here.
Right.
Yeah. So if you, if people can be allowed to have tents here.
Right.
Then you've got this place where people have to drive through to park, and they, and they can go past tents.
Yes, can't do it there. And you, and you have a problem with them driving past people in the tents?
Yeah, we're going to do, that's what we're talking about.
So then let me ask you a question. If we require them to go on the, this part near Jefferson, along that other side.
That's okay.
Now, if you allow me to finish, you have the same, you have the same issue. So, it appears that you just don't want people to be there, you'd rather them to be there, even though it's the same situation.
It's, but, it gives them two places to come in over here, two places-
You have-
That are not, with no tents.
So then, but if they are all here, right? This is what you're talking about, hypothetically, if people can be placed here, you have one, two, three places people can enter and not have to drive right in front of them.
But you're still, you still may have some, some people back here. I think this just needs to be off limits, and then you, everybody knows there are two places they can drive in free of any tents, any electioneering.
And are we talking about tents blocking people from driving in?
No, just going past. You're going to have people in those tents with signs and, and that kind of thing.
Okay.
So.
That is a little bit too far, in my opinion. I want to make it clear that I was in favor of looking at a way to like extend the distance where people would be able to set up to allow voters a lot more parking space, because that was a big issue I've seen in previous elections. But now we are going so far as that you can't go anywhere in that spot, and that's a little too far, in my opinion. I think it is perfectly fine with three alternate ways to drive in, that you do not have to go in front of a tent or drive in front of a tent.
This guarantees two, two ways in with nobody else around. You, and, and if they want to come in back there, pass people, that's okay. But this gives them two ways in, nobody will be here.
If we kept it this way, wouldn't they also be guaranteed to come in here or here?
No, because there could be people anyplace, you could put a tent in.
Oh, I thought they have to be in the east end of the property.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't really limiting them to the east end. I was going to-
Do you want to take a lot of what we have to do?
Well, no, this, you could put your tent anywhere back there.
That's, but that's not what-
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, that's not what's in the ordinance. I think we're talking about this line on the east end, is that right?
We're talking about this fence line.
Yeah.
Okay, and then it- And then this area right here, and you, you don't want it in front of the fellowship hall. Okay, so then that just limits the tents to this area right here along that fence. They should not have access over here. It should be along that fence.
We'll have three unob-
Yes, unobstructed.
Because you have-
Okay.
But are you here?
Here.
Go again.
Here.
Yes. Yeah, because you can have right here.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but if you have enough people, are they going to be happy being side by side with tents on, on that, along there?
Not at all.
What's that?
That's, that was-
I said it's-
Having, having all the tents, that you could have- Three candidates, school board candidates, that they all have to be side by side over there.
Well, and I think keeping it to this east end gives us flexibility. We don't know how many candidates there are going to be. One election, we could have this location during a presidential election where you have, anybody on the ballot that's able to be there. We could have so few, which just limits the city council, but at least we have some flexibility to where this east end is available for however many part, however many candidates.
Tents we have to have.
Right, but they are still pushed back away from people, not obstructing people entering, or not even, they don't have to have contact if they don't want to from them entering the polling place. I think what we have post-year is, is fine.
But they only have, if you, if you could be here- But they only have, if you, if you could be here and here, so you're saying both places along the east?
I'm saying along the east fence line, uh, if I could, I, I would, I would not limit, I, I would, I would not allow it here. I would just allow it along that fence line and not in front of the fellowship hall.
Roman's saying here.
So, well just, well just, cause that's what the ordinance says, as long as it's on the east side of it. And I think if we just take that, that's a compromise for everybody. You know, I'm looking at allowing anything here. Uh, Councilor Hughes wants to just mainly have it in this area. Mayor, you don't want them here either. You want more. I think we have an equal, I, I, I think we have a medium solution. If we say, have this distance, this radius distance, and allow, or allow candidates to set up their tent or wherever. Whatever they're setting up there along this east side. Just make it that.
But then, all we're doing is giving two entrances without, uh...
No, they're real, well, yeah, they're giving...
That way. You only have two, and you come in off that back side.
But it's not like they can stop them from driving. I mean, they'll just get drive right past them anyways.
I'm saying if people don't want to do that, you're limiting them to two then.
If they don't want...
Then the only other, uh, option is to give them three and, and limit everybody on this fence.
Well, and that's okay.
That's okay. That area.
Joe, you have a line here.
Um, I was gonna make a joke about it. We'd be voting anymore if we go Ted because we'd have everybody pass tents. I, I am, I am grateful that we have a place up on where the voters can go and park. They should have the primary use of that parking lot.
That whole, yes, that whole's right.
And, uh, if there's a concern about entering from Main Street. And, and coming upon a whole row of tents by fellowship, uh, the fellowship hall. I mean, I... I, I'm, I'm almost agnostic on how, how far, I just want far back enough where you can get in there without having to, uh... To wave through, uh, candidates in there. So, I'm, I'm anxious to see someone actually make a motion that has a line drawn and I can see it, and then I can say...
Well, what we have proposed in the ordinance right now is...
On the first reading?
Right, is that two hundred foot radius, which is beyond the yellow in the big map. And, as long as they're parked on the ace, east end of the property. We're getting, and I don't know if we need to make a motion to do that, but I think that's a compromise from what everybody's wanting here.
Can we, can we say that, and so that when we say the, because there's the east end only? Mike, you, you know, you've got to write this up, Bert, and you've got to put it in words for us, so...
Well, you know, and the only, the only, you can modify it to say, um, on the Jefferson side up to the fellowship hall. East end, east side, from Jefferson to the fellowship hall. And that's where the tents can be located, and leave that fellowship hall area open.
Open.
I think we would need to do a little bit more crafting on the wording, cause that could change one day. From a fellowship hall to something else, or...
Okay, Mike, you had mentioned, uh, if, if there was construction for any reason or something going on. This is more specific.
That's fine, and so maybe you want to, um, add some leeway in there, you know, that... I, I, you know, I don't know, I'm trying to think out loud, that says, you know. Based on conditions, the city manager has the right, has the authority to change it with notice to the council, or something like that.
Okay, alright. Okay. Alright, so are we all in agreement then, on from Jefferson Street down to, um... Down that, the, the, the east side.
Fellowship Hall.
To the fellowship hall.
So we'd be changing what's in number two in our ordinance then?
Yeah, we do.
Two hundred and forty feet?
Well, we leave the two forty. And, and just make that specific.
Yeah.
Bill's playing at home. What's the boundary line?
I know, I wonder how people watching this are thinking.
Okay, so we're looking at number two, right?
Yep.
So you're gonna effectively change the language that's already been drafted by staff in there.
Which is fine, because it's first reading.
I know it is, I'm just pointing that out.
Well, but we need, we've got to do it. We've got to do it, if we're gonna do it.
We've got to, we have to. I think what we have in place in the ordinance is a compromise from what everybody's trying to achieve. And I'm in favor of keeping it. I think staff did a good job taking all of our input and putting it in language here. And I'm in favor, you know, we always talk about support staff, let's support staff and keep the language that they put in here for us. I'm for that.
Well, I just know people well enough that somebody will try to, uh, if we don't, if it's not specific, somebody will push the envelope. And try to, try to. Take it one place further, so... Okay, so it's located in the eastern end. For the auditorium.
Not to be a stickler, but there is a, there is a rosette down here that shows us northeast of it. And, uh, the eastern end is like corners.
Southeast.
Almost nothing occurring that runs north-south.
Okay, so we, if we say located in the. Eastern end of the parking area. From Jefferson to the, there's a, it, it, this...
Or whatever, yeah. My question is, will we have enough space depending on the number of candidates that are gonna be there?
That was one of my...
That's the concern that I have. One of the concerns, I should say.
But they could go to the other side. I mean, there's, there's enough space.
What other side?
Well, they can go, um, okay, they can, eh, anywhere in here. I mean, you could use all of that. There's two sides.
Are we allowing both sides of this parking spaces?
Well, I...
I thought they had to be like butted up against the fence there.
Well, uh, that's... What? He's asking the question. Him, it's both sides.
Are we allowing both of those, or just those butted up against the fence there?
Just butted up against the fence.
That's what I thought, the mayor was alluding to, that we'd be able to use both sides.
Just butted up against the fence.
Right, that's furthest away.
Furthest away.
Yeah, that's why, that's why my concern, one of my concerns goes to, we're not, we're trying to eliminate all of this. Save all this parking space for voters and keep it out for candidates. And one of my concerns is if you limit this space and you only have this space, that limits the amount of space you can have for candidates or the representatives. And depending on the number of those representatives or candidates we have. We don't know if that space is sufficient.
Well, that would have been a question, but I think if all of this is open for, this is a lot of parking. This will suffice for voting.
We have pa- yeah, all of this is parking, so...
Well, but if, even if, if you have all of this here, you'll have plenty of parking.
And there's a lot of parking on Jefferson Street.
And there's still...
That's, that's what I was saying. We have plenty of parking, no matter what we do. That parking slot has never been completely full at voting. Uh, I wish it was, with the amount of voters they have in this community, I wish it was, but. We don't have that many.
Yeah, if our vehicles are not parked in spots where tents are. And they're parked on the street there on Jefferson.
There's plenty of...
Then there's plenty of space for tents.
Okay, are we? Okay, do we need to add to this that it is, um... We have the eastern end of the parking area, but we don't say, we don't specifically say along the fence.
We need to specify along the fence.
Yeah, doing the, with the amendment.
Eastern end of the parking lot, along the fence.
Along the fence.
From...
I'm gonna petition that checks to build the fence.
To the fellowship hall.
Yes.
Of St. Peters.
I'm, not, not to interrupt, but I'm anticipating that. The city manager or city secretary is gonna go out there before the election starts and stake this area, make sure candidates understand, yeah.
That would be excellent.
Not, not that I won't put this language in there, but I, I, I think it'll be very clear.
Alright, anything else? Are we all in agreement on that? We in agreement with everything else?
Can that change just here? No.
No, what?
We're not all in agreement. I think what we had right here is a good compromise.
Well, that was not a, uh, that was the wrong question to ask, so, um... As the amendment will read now. As we need, well, someone will make a, a motion to be, this the, the agreement. Or the wording, I'm sorry, that this would be the wording. Okay?
Hey, are you asking me?
Well, you, you feel it should be more than that. Okay, alright. Okay, any other comments other than you, you disagree with this? Joe? Are you good with it?
I would appreciate when we come back that there's lines drawn where we, where it is. I understand what we're saying, but I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, alright, uh, Jeff? Brenda?
I'm good.
Okay.
Other thing I want to be, uh, clear about is, um, so we've got three distances in the ordinance. We've got the hundred feet, which is the signs. The two hundred and forty feet, which is the tents and staging area for the candidates. And then we have a thousand feet, which is for that sound amplification. I don't know if you wanna, you mean, you've seen the, the way that line moves out. I don't know if you wanna, uh... Look at that issue or what, but that's, that's why the thousand feet is in there.
Look at what issue?
Well, currently it says you can only have sound a thousand feet from the entrance, and that means you'd be on North Street.
Right. That's state law.
A thousand feet is?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. If you're, if you are electioneering or making a political speech. Right, that, and that's what it says in number ten on page four. Yeah, that's state law.
And that's why then...
That's why we've drawn that in, yeah.
Okay, alright, okay, so we'll...
So are you asking if we want to like keep that diagram in as a detachment with a one thousand feet, or I'm sorry, what was?
No, I, I wouldn't, uh, no, I, I'm not, you, you could, I mean, you absolutely could if you wanted to. Um, I'm just making sure, uh, I don't know if the comment earlier. Uh, I think there was a, a comment made about why, you know, the thousand feet in here. And so I was making sure that you all understood.
It wouldn't just be a radius either, Mike, it'd be a circle, wouldn't it? I mean, you wouldn't want to have them on the plaza beside Calo with a speaker.
It's a good point. From the door, from the, you know, board.
Okay, so that. Will probably stay.
Okay.
Okay?
Uh, go, sorry.
Okay, so the only thing we're really talking about is just. Where the tents are gonna go.
On the east end by Jefferson Street.
Uh-huh, along, along?
Along the parish line.
Or two of them.
Along the tents.
Yeah. Will this allow? Any person, we have the limit on, they can set up and use one tent. Does that mean that's all they're allowed to use and, and occupy, or can we park our cars, park trailers? Park stationary cars are gonna be there all day. We can't do any of that? Okay, is that clear in here?
To just limit that area for, to tents and shade structures?
A- any area that we're gonna be using there, if they're gonna be using it for electioneering. You know, we don't...
That would seem that a tent or a temporary shade structure within an area designated by the city manager, which is where those stakes are gonna be placed, I'm assuming. For the tents, I wouldn't think that there'd be cars, you know...
I would say there shouldn't be cars in there.
Cars or trailers, or...
Right.
Okay.
None of their...
I think we ought to clear, I'll, I mean, I think we ought to clarify that. I don't think. I don't, I don't think staff can enforce that as, that issue without clarification. So I can, I mean...
Let's make it clear.
That, and make it clear, that's only vehicles that are being used as part of the electioneering. If I park my car right beside my tent, assuming I'm a candidate. Then that's fine, because my car is just there. I'm not using my car to electioneer. But if I have my trailer there and it has a sign, or if I have my car there with magnets on it or signs attached to it. That is now being used for electioneering, and I'm not supposed to have that there. Are we, is that...
But I would say you shouldn't have a car, there doesn't need to be a car there anyway.
Yeah, there shouldn't be cars there.
That's the tents or the shades you can park the car out on Jefferson Street. As a candidate.
Yep.
Public parking.
Or you can, in some of that back parking lot, you could use it for your own car.
As long as you don't have a sign or...
As long as it doesn't have a sign or something on it. So all you get is, all they get is a tent.
Okay, so I wouldn't be able to take my trailer on this other side and put up signs on it or anything? Okay. As long as that's clear. That's fine with me.
Okay, Mike, do we need to add some language to make that clearer?
You know, if you're, I, I understand, I mean, you're all, we'll make a motion on this, on a, a first reading. But I understand that's an issue, and then the, uh, further explanation of Jefferson Street. Along the fence, property line, up to the corner of the fellowship hall. So I'll address both of those issues.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion.
Can we address the sign thing that I brought up, why we're limiting? Only four signs that can be, can be carried out of the ten? Why does it have to be four? And also why that number, why isn't it five, if we're gonna pick a number? Half of ten or something?
You know, I mean, I'm. I'm comfortable with just. Ten signs. What you do with your signs, if you want to wave all ten of them out in the, have on the sidewalk, then, fine. Ten signs, that's it.
I don't think you should have a sign out on. In, out in the front at all.
In front of what?
In front of the building, on the sidewalk, on, uh, uh, on Memorial. I don't think, to me, that's part of, of distraction for drivers. It's part of. Uh, it's not harassing, but it's part of that element of, uh... I don't know what the word is. Intimidation, that's, that's the word.
It's also, it's also an element of, yeah, I know it is. It's also an element. Of freedom of speech. Having, allowing somebody to be on the sidewalk with a sign. People can allow that, you know, we allow that in the courthouse. And people have the right to that. That's your freedom of speech. So, I would agree, I, I don't like the number ten, but I would agree that you can do whatever you want with your signs. If you're gonna limit it to ten, then you just allow them to do. What they want with it.
I mean, ten signs are not a lot of signs. You put one at your booth, you put one on Jefferson, you put one on. Twenty-seven, and you hold a few. It's ten signs.
But if we have ten. Ten people with all of their signs out on. Memorial, on, on Main Street. We could have a whole lot of nonsense out there. I just, I just don't think that's right.
I want to be clear on what we're calling fellowship hall. You know, the long fence up here at the top, that's actually apartments. That's not fellowship hall.
I think it's down to the fel- where the fellowship hall begins. So, I mean, I'm, I was gonna look and see what Google calls...
I'm looking at the property map, and I just want to make sure we are all calling the same building the same thing.
Yeah.
And where does fellowship hall begin? Where does fellowship begin? Where does meeting end?
Alright, we need to make some decisions here. So, I mean, if, if, if you leave it the way it is...
Do we have an agreement then to strike out the limit on signs you can carry?
No.
Oh, I thought we did.
No, she, uh, she's got a valid point.
Yeah, if, if you've got three, four candidates, and they're, and they've got all ten signs out on Main Street.
You've got forty signs out there.
Are you only limiting that to the sidewalk that's directly adjacent to the public?
No, just four signs can be held out of the ten.
No, I know.
Doesn't matter where you hold it. Doesn't matter where you hold them.
So we can't hold them on the sidewalk?
I don't think so, I don't think we should. That's still part of that intimidating, of yelling at people in the street and, and waving your sign and, and.
I haven't seen one person during these last two campaigns that I ran, whether it be me or an opponent, yell at somebody on the street while they were carrying a sign.
Oh, they're.
We'd wave.
Well, they're waving and yelling at them, hi, and all kinds of things, so.
So now we're saying we can't say hi or wave at people if you're carrying a sign, but if you're not carrying a sign and you just stand there, you can.
I don't think they should be allowed in pe, in person on the street, but Main Street.
The public sidewalk, that's a problem.
You can't place a sign in the right of way today?
We know, that's not an issue though.
Yeah, it is an issue, 'cause you're trying to get them on the sidewalk, which is in the right of way.
It, that's placing a sign, you can't place a sign within the right of way. It's. All due respect, this is, we're outside public comment, so.
Yeah, we are, and you're outside the boundaries.
Mike, do you have any advice for us here to try to, can we limit it to the, to four, can we, can we eliminate it altogether?
Ten and four, that's how we wrote it the first time. The only thing we're changing now is where we can have tents that will be marked by city staff before the election. So with that, Mike, with the verbiage that you're gonna put in about only on the east end of the property, from Jefferson down the Harton Line to the fence break where Fellowship Hall starts, I will make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two zero, first reading, with those modifications. Yes, sir.
Now exclude vehicles and trailers from that?
Yes, sir.
Second campaign area, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, raise your right hand, and Mr. Garcia is opposed. All right, thank you all for your patience. I have to agree, it's silly that we have to go through all this. Okay, eight A.
Resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution providing for the appointment of two alternate judges to assist the presiding judge of the city of Curville Municipal Court. This item is eligible for executive session five five one point oh seven four, and we do not have any citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you.
Counsel, I gave you all some information in the packet, my recommendation is for counsel to appoint both these gentlemen before you as associate judges, it'll be the primary responsibility of Mr. Henry to serve, but if he can't, because he's also a judge and a prosecutor all over this area, his associate would serve. And I, I, I just think it lends itself to a more efficient court, a court that really, you know, we don't, aren't dead in the water when Judge Pearson goes off to conferences or takes vacation, which she tends to do a couple of times a year, so that's my recommendation, is to adopt the, for you all to adopt the resolution that's placed before you.
And just to be clear, Mike, we're not adding judges and increasing more salaries. There, there will be one judge serving at a time for whatever number of dollars per hour that we pay them, but we're not paying multiple judges at the same time a, a fee for their services.
Right, up until the time that Judge McGuire went up to district court, we had two judges, and they both held dockets on the same week. Judge Pearson does that now, these judges will only serve when, when, when she, during her absence.
So it will not change what the amount of money that's paid to, for them, yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, any questions, counsel, any comments?
Nope.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-three.
Second, from Joe, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, eight B, Shelley.
Discuss the city's declaration of local state of disaster due to the COVID public health emergency, March twentieth, twenty twenty.
Counsel, just in, just kinda back where we were, so March of twenty twenty is when we started the COVID pandemic, and it was declared a public health emergency, so we did declare the city's declaration coupled after the state of Texas declaration. We have since stayed aligned with the state of Texas, being consistent with them since March of twenty twenty. In May of eleventh, twenty twenty-three, so the CDC has declared no, no longer a federal public health emergency. The governor Abbott on May fifteenth did renew one month of the disaster declaration, but he did not renew it on June fifteenth, as he said he was not. And so for us, I would recommend at this point, as in the agenda bill, to remain consistent with the state of Texas and no longer have the disaster, or the city's disaster declaration for public health emergency.
And if another emergency comes along and another declaration is needed, that will be taken care of?
Absolutely, so that's what we do on emergency management, so we will remain consistent, public health emergency, natural disaster, whatever it may be.
Whatever it is, okay, counsel, any questions?
I just wanna confirm, I'm sure you wouldn't be bringing this to us if this weren't the case or if this were the case, but I remember one of the reasons why we wanted to keep this on the books was there are some federal grants, federal dollars that can come down to us because of COVID and everything that we're still in ways recovering from, you know, it's been a long process of that.
Yes.
Is this gonna hinder any of that, or are we completely covered with everything that we can get as of right now?
We're completely good with everything that we had, and we did have that discussion moving forward, so we are good with that. And that was one of the reasons we wanted to remain, just in case there was something there, but we are good at this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a, wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate that, you know, from, from the time this started, we, I know that when we saw, you know, federal regulations or, or anything that was pushed out by the governor's office or, or the state office of emergency management, we, we looked at, I mean, I always tried to look at the language and said, hey, we had to have something in place before we could, and I, I've, I've not seen anything toward that yet, so. And just remember too, wha, what, if you all wanna move forward with terminating the declaration, I'll bring forward a resolution next time that will do that. I didn't see this in the packet until it was too late to kind of scramble around and need to get stuff together, so. Apologize for that, but we'll bring you back, I'll bring you back, we'll bring you back a resolution next time that will undo the re, the declaration.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so do we have?
Do you wanna motion from us, or?
It's, I mean, it sounds like, it looks like consensus is to do that, I'm comfortable with that.
Oh, okay, very good.
Good?
Good, you wanna make any?
We have consensus, unless anybody objects.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we have some appointments to be made, interview teams. Do we need to go into executive session, or are these such that we can do that right here?
Mayor, I'll start on the building board of adjustment and appeals, we do not need to go into executive session for that. Mr. Harris, councilmember Harris and I have talked about this, we also talked with staff, we are gonna request that we push this to mainly up to, to staff's discretion, but at the very minimum to the next council meeting. For a couple of reasons, one, we have not been able to get in contact with the current applicant we have, and two, there possibly going to be either one or two and another vacancy due to either resignation or absences for meetings. So we're gonna need to work through that procedure, bring that back to council for us to properly appoint members to fill those vacancies and to fill those positions, and so. If there's anything I didn't cover, councilman?
Get it right on the head, sir.
All right.
Want to wait?
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna wait until we can get in touch with the applicant and find out what the, one is or the other. Either resignation or we're removed.
Yes.
Okay, all right then, we will leave that. Planning and zoning?
I don't believe we need to go.
No.
So.
No, we don't.
We, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Councilmember Hughes and myself have both talked to Mr. Swallow for to take the vacant seat that's on planning and zoning, that was vacated by somebody that had to do something else. He is very well qualified, Drew, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Swallow, he is the former planning director for the city of Midland, so he can definitely bring some light to planning and zoning, and so.
Yeah, and I would just like to add that there, there is another applicant, but he has also applied for the.
BBAA.
BBAA, and I would like for him to have the opportunity to go through that process for that particular board. So at this time, I, I would like to bring Charles Swallow's name forward as a motion.
We have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Charles Swallow has been appointed to planning and zoning. And the last one, zoning board of adjustment.
Yes, and we had one vacancy and one applicant. And I would like to, with your approval, mayor, I would like to make the motion to appoint Lynn Niles to the zoning board of adjustments.
All right, she has been serving, right, as, as the.
Was the alternate, yes.
For a, a year or so, all right, do we have a second to that? From Mr. Harris, all right, all in favor, raise, raise your right hand, please, and it is unanimous, all right.
Mayor, I'll just confirm, we also have been one more vacancy I guess we need to fill, since we don't have an applicant to that one, right?
We, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right.
There will be an alternate appointed.
Vacancy, yeah.
All right, we have reached the end of the evening, counsel, and I don't believe we need to go into executive session, do we, or do we? If, if we do.
We do.
We do, all right.
Mayor, I'll move to go into executive session for item ten E.
Second.
Under sections five five one oh seven one, five five one oh eight seven.
And all in favor, right hand, and we will at eight oh two turn to executive session upstairs. Nine oh one, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting, and we have no report from the, are we on, yes, we're on. We have no report from the executive session. Counsel, is there anything for future agendas that we need to mention? All right, at nine oh one, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody, and good night.